Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 26th Annual Student Union's Board of Education Forum. My name is Jenek McLinskey, and I am the 2023-2024 President of the Lancaster High School Student Union. In front of me is the Student Union Vice President-elect for the 2024-2025 School Year, Dan Ambrose. Dan will be serving as timekeeper for tonight's question-and-answer session. The purpose of tonight's program is to allow for each candidate running for trustee of the Lancaster School District Board of Education the opportunity to express his or her personal opinion in response to questions being submitted by members of the Lancaster School District voting community. As you entered the auditorium tonight, several Student Union representatives had asked question cards that you were asked to complete if you wanted to pose a question to the candidates. Additionally, we offered the same opportunity to the student body of the high school, and we have included both sets of questions in this container. I will randomly select from these questions for tonight's program. There are three candidates running for two positions on the Lancaster Board of Education. Board members are elected at large and will serve a three-year term from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2026. I will now introduce each candidate based on the order that they are listed on the ballot by reading a short block of their feet. Will each candidate please stand as I introduce you, and then we will begin the question-and-answer session? Our first candidate is Anita Chabon. Anita Chabon has lived in Lancaster for the past sixteen years with her husband, daughter, seventeen, and son, fourteen, who attend Lancaster High School and Lancaster Middle School. She is a Buffalo area native growing up in the town of Hamburg. She attended Sienna College in Albany, New York, where she earned her bachelor's degree in finance. Anita Chabon is currently a senior vice president at M&amp;T Bank. She has worked there for twenty-five years and is a senior finance manager within the finance division. She believes the leadership skills that she has developed from her years in senior management, along with her diversified knowledge of accounting and finance, will be an asset to the Lancaster School Board. Anita has been an active volunteer within the district for over ten years. She served on the Como Park PTO Board for five years and was the co-treasurer for four. She currently serves as the treasurer of the Lancaster Middle School HSA Board and has previously held the titles of vice president and co-president. Anita also currently serves on the district PTO council and has been a volunteer member for seven years. She also volunteers for the LHS Academy of Finance, in addition to serving on its board. With such a long history of volunteering, Anita hopes to use her firsthand knowledge of the district to provide a unique perspective to the board. Her main goal is to provide support for teachers, students, and administrators, while at the same time maintaining fiduciary responsibility. In her free time, Anita likes spending time with her family. She also likes to travel, watch the Bills and Sabres, and attend her son's hockey games. Anita is looking forward to running for the Lancaster School Board to provide support to the students, district, and community. Thank you, Mrs. Chabon. Our next candidate is David Lyman. David Lyman has lived in Lancaster with his wife Michelle for sixteen years. All four of their children currently attend Lancaster schools. Julia, freshman, Sydney, sixth grade, Alyssa, fourth grade, and Jason, kindergarten. Mr. Lyman wrote, "Lancaster has a rich tradition of educational excellence, and its goal to ensure this experience is achieved for the current and future students of our community." For the past twenty-three years, he has utilized his business degree from Buffalo State College to run a successful wealth management practice with federal investors. During that time, he has been dedicated to assisting his clients in reaching their personal financial and retirement goals. Additionally, over the past two decades, he has demonstrated a strong commitment to the community through various volunteer activities. Mr. Lyman has served on the Board of Directors of the DePew Lancaster Boys and Girls Club for over twenty years, including being board president for the last eight years. Mr. Lyman has also dedicated his time to volunteer for Junior Achievement of Western New York, working with hundreds of students in Western New York since 2008. Mr. Lyman was a scholar-athlete during his time at Buffalo State College. His experience of playing Division III basketball has allowed him to have a direct impact on local youth as he has volunteered to coach various youth basketball programs, including being the volunteer assistant coach for the DePew High School Basketball Program for over twenty years. Mr. Lyman has a strong commitment to the community and wants to ensure that the youth of Lancaster will continue to have an educational experience that will allow them to be successful leaders of Western New York and beyond. Thank you, Mr. Lyman. Our next candidate is Barbara Casmerak. Mrs. Casmerak and her husband Mark have been residents of the school district for almost forty years. Their two children received excellent educations in Lancaster. Both attended schools in the district from kindergarten through graduation and went on to be successful in their higher education choices, their lives, and their careers. The Casmeraks are now involved in the school system through their three grandchildren, who are students in Hillview Elementary, William Street School, and Lancaster Middle School. Education has always been a priority for Mrs. Casmerak. She is a graduate of SUNY Geneseo with a Bachelor of Science in Business and the University of Buffalo with an MBA. In addition, Mrs. Casmerak has education credits through Miller-Prumore College and Damon College. Her work experience includes clerical positions for the Village of Lancaster and Hillview Elementary School in her early years of motherhood. Mrs. Casmerak has worked in event operations for large organizations and has started two event planning businesses. Mrs. Casmerak's prime focus is her family. Her other interests revolve around helping others, whether it's sitting with a person over coffee or organizing a book-reading event for a mom, author, who lost her daughter to fentanyl. One of Mrs. Casmerak's main goals and reasons for running for the board is to bring a new voice, a voice of a woman who has experienced the challenge of the Lancaster school system and the excellence of the Lancaster school system, a voice that desires to see all children learning in an environment where they feel safe and respected, a voice for those taxpayers who sometimes feel like they are not being heard, and a voice that comes from her own life, work, and education experience, as well as her conservative Christian foundation. Balancing the financial burdens of life at this time with the needs of our children is difficult but necessary. Mrs. Casmerak looks forward to working with others on the challenges. Our children are not just our present, but they are also our future. Thank you, Mrs. Casmerak. And now we will begin our question-and-answer session. We will proceed as follows. Attendees of tonight's program who wish to raise a question or comment were asked to submit their question or comment on the cards provided at the tables outside of our auditorium and then handed to one of our representatives. I have those cards with me now. We will ask the questions or state the comments in random order. We will pose as many questions and comments as time allows, giving the candidates the opportunity to respond to each. Please be respectful of this process as we try to create the most productive opportunity for everyone here to listen to the candidates' positions. Please refrain from raising questions or making comments from your seats. Again, if you have not heard your comment or question addressed, you may, of course, contact any of the candidates directly. If your question is selected, when your name and address is read, please scan so the candidates can address you with their answers. We will now select the first question. This question says, "Do any current board members or candidates work for the same employer? And if so, what is your relationship with each other at that employer? For example, same department, supervisor, et cetera." We will begin with Mrs. Chabon.
Okay, that's better. Sorry. Thanks, everybody. Bear with me. So the question is, "Do I work at the same company as any of the current board members?" I believe Glenn Jackson is the only one. But I'm in finance, he's in HR, and we don't have any any co-mingling of any responsibilities for anything. And that's the only one that I know of.
Next, we have Mr. Lyman.
No, I do not.
And finally, Mrs. Casmerak.
No, I cannot.
Our next question is from Jillian Swycard, who lives at 152 Pavement Row. Her question is, "Are you receiving any campaign contributions from individuals or organizations? And if so, how much and how will that affect how you vote on the board?" We will begin with Mr. Lyman.
No, I have not received any campaign contributions.
Next, we will go to Mrs. Casmerak.
No, I have not received any contributions at all.
And Mrs. Chabon.
No, I have not received any contributions whatsoever.
Our next question is from Jen Binness, who lives on Central F. "If selected, what are your strategies will you use to ensure board policy to support marginalized and minimize members of our community, such as trans students?" Thank you. We will begin with Mrs. Casmerak.
Well, that's a very interesting question. At this point, because I've not been a part of the conversation at all, I can't say what strategies. I don't know what the conversation has been on the board up to this point. I look forward to the conversation. I certainly have some viewpoints on it, but I do believe that every child in this school and every school should be safe.
Next, we will go to Mrs. Chabon.
Yes, I think that it's very important to have a safe space for every child. I think that we need to be inclusive. We need to understand the needs of each children or each child. And I think that as long as we can create a safe space for everyone, I think that that is the best option.
Next, we will hear from Mr. Lyman.
I agree as well in that as a member, as a board member, or if I was elected, obviously, but that we do need to provide inclusivity for everyone, of all students, provide safe spaces and treat everyone equally.
Thank you. Our next question is from Tara Roaming, who lives at 76 Livingston Street. She says, "Why should I give you my vote and why are you the best candidate?" We will begin with Mrs. Chabon.
That's a really great question. For me personally, I know that I've been incredibly involved in the district for a very long time. There have been lots of times where it was a bit of a struggle, but I continued to help. That's my main goal. I'm just a mom who wants to keep helping. My kids are getting older. I started when they were very little. And at this point, you know, my career in the different volunteering areas of, you know, PTOs and things like that are coming to an end quickly. So this just makes the next logical step. I think that I have a really good idea about fiscal responsibility based on the job that I currently have and have had for twenty-five years, and I just truly care about this district.
Next, Mr. Lyman.
I feel that, you know, if I'm honored to receive your vote, that my commitment to the community has been longstanding with youth in the community through the Boys and Girls Club, Academy of Finance, Coaching, Junior Achievement of Western New York, that I've had a longstanding commitment to the youth in this community. I want to continue that, to give back to the kids in our community. I have a vested interest as well in having four kids in the district. Next year, I'll have four kids in four different buildings, which is crazy. But, you know, I have a strong commitment to this community and the kids of this community to make sure that we can continue to move forward.
Mrs. Casmerak.
Well, certainly, I would absolutely love each of your votes. I think I have the experience of knowing what it is to go through this excellent district through my own kids. They are adults now. They've gone through the district. They are successful in their careers and in their family lives. Now I have the privilege to live in a multi-generational home, where I have direct relationship with my grandchildren, who are also in this district, and they're thriving. There are so many good things. My little granddaughter was able to be one of the littles in the band this past year, which, again, the music department in particular has been so amazing for us in both generations. I look forward to being the new voice. I do not know anybody on the board, although I've met him through a mutual friend just by phone. And tonight, and I love the thought of being able to bring my own opinions and who I am to the board.
Thank you. Our next question is from Tom Spraw, who lives on Center Drive. "Are you friends with or have any sort of relationship with any individual on the Lancaster Administrative Team or Board of Education? If so, please list them by name." We will begin with Mr. Lyman.
On the administration team, no. On the board, yes. I mean, I grew up with Glenn Jackson. We went to high school together and have remained friends for quite some time. Looking at the rest of the board, some of them I know. The other person would be Kevin Davenport, who lives down the street from me. So I met him when I moved into the neighborhood many years ago and have remained friends through that.
Next, we will hear from Mrs. Casmerak.
I do not have any relationships or friendships. Like I said, I met Tim tonight. I've heard about Jill because my son went to school with her and he talked very highly of you. Otherwise, I do not know her. And then that's it.
Mrs. Chabon.
I don't have any personal relationships with any of the administration. I have had the opportunity to be in every single school every year as part of the district PTO council, so I have met and talked with many of them over the years. You know, being very active within the schools has created relationships from an administration to a volunteer role, but nothing personal.
Thank you. Our next question, "Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education?" We will begin with Mrs. Casmerak.
Yeah, I would believe it's that I know there are taxpayers and parents who feel that they're not, do not have a voice for this school board. And I would love to be their voice, but much bigger than that. I'd love to be a new voice. I know the school just different twenty years ago. I will say at that point, I did know the president of the school board was personal friends with my husband and I, as well as the superintendent. We knew him. And I look forward to being able to be a voice on a board that maybe some voices are missing. You know, although the teachers chose not to endorse me, I believe in teachers one hundred percent. Not positive why they chose not to endorse me, but I know that I would be a voice for them also.
Thank you. Mrs. Chabon.
I don't have any personal agendas trying to join this board. Like I mentioned before, I'm just a mom who likes to help. And I think that I have a skill set that I can use to do that. There, I don't know what I don't know, and I'm not afraid to admit that. But for me personally, I don't have, you know, anything that it's like, well, this is what I want, so I'm going to change it. That's not the point for me to volunteer. It's only to help create the best school district that we can and then also help the community through it.
Mr. Lyman.
I don't have an agenda as well. It's just, I think it's my nature to want to help people. I've always had that. I volunteered, like I said, many different organizations. It just comes from that, from inside me, that I want to help and make a difference in people's lives and situations. And I've always done that. My wife hasn't always been too fond of it because I've never, you know, she's like, "How do you find time to do all this?" And, you know, if you care about something, you're going to find time. And that's what my goal is, to be able to find time and make a difference in some way.
Thank you. Our next question, "What is your stance on mental health awareness in Lancaster? And how would you take extra steps to improve the social-emotional education for Lancaster students?" We will begin with Mrs. Chabon.
I think that mental health is incredibly important. I have two teenagers, and they were both profoundly impacted by COVID. You know, I like to call it the Great Pause, because everything kind of stopped for them. And with all of our kids, is how I feel. Everybody was hustle and bustle, and then it was like, oh, here we are, just at home. And how do you create those, you know, have those social connections? I think that has impacted things quite a bit. So I think that it should be at the forefront. I think it's just as important as physical health. So I would hope, and again, I don't know what I don't know, but I would certainly advocate for, you know, more funding, if it's possible, for more school counselors to help create an area for kids to be able to thrive.
Mr. Lyman.
Mental health is very important, I think, in our youth today in order to be successful, not only in the day-to-day lives, but it's something that we should be allocating resources to, to make sure that those concerns are addressed. As Miss Chabon mentioned, it's just as important as physical health. And we need to make sure our kids are taken care of on both sides.
Mrs. Casmerak.
I agree. I believe it is an issue at this time for our young people that can't be left behind. I mentioned in my bio that I helped to build an event where an author who had a daughter who went through the school system, who died of fentanyl. And I wanted other mothers to hear her story because I minister to many women, and I can't even tell you how many have addicted children who go through, are in the school or out of the school and have dealt with death of fentanyl. So I believe we need to look at the issue closer. There are more than just counselors. There's needs that are needed. These children and young people need to be addressed.
Thank you. Our next question, "Do you support the proposed 2024-2025 school budget? If so or not, please explain your answer." We will begin with Mr. Lyman.
Yes, I support it as far as the details. Of why, I mean, I think we need to keep moving forward. Fun, but needs to be fun for our teachers, for our students, for our community. So yes, I do support the budget.
Next, Mrs. Casmerak.
I actually was not a part of the conversation on this budget. I am looking forward to the budget hearing that's coming up right after this, and I would have a better decision made at that point. I hope you're all staying for it because, obviously, if you are a taxpayer, you need to hear what is in the budget and what is in the proposition. So I can't say at this moment, but in a couple hours, I might be able to answer that question personally, if you'd like to ask me.
Mrs. Chabon.
Yes, I do support the budget. I think that the community benefits when the schools benefit. Again, you know, I've mentioned, you know, fiscal responsibility is a big part of my life. It's probably almost, you know, seventy-five percent of my career that I've built over the years. But I think that there are so many things that are needed, and this is such a large district. Price tags may look high, but when you consider all of the things that are needed for our kids, yes, I strongly support the budget.
Our next question, "What experiences do you remember from your K-12 education? And how will these experiences affect your performance on the board?" We will begin with Mrs. Casmerak.
Okay, now you're asking me to go back decades and decades and decades. Well, again, education was so, so important to me. I pick up my grandchildren at the bus stop, which at our house, because our bribery is so far, is a long walk. And I get to talk to my grandchildren, and I was talking to my one granddaughter this morning, this afternoon, and I asked her about tests. And she goes, "Oh, there's a science test. She's in William Street tomorrow. There's a science test tomorrow." And I said, "Are you excited?" She goes, "No, nobody's excited about tests." I said, "I love math tests." So anyway, I think that K-12, if it's personal, is a significant season of life that we need to support our children at every level, from kindergarten right up to high school, in so many different issues and ways. Finances, obviously, are needed, buildings, but teachers... And I'm going to get a rep. I could go onward. Thank you. There's the rep.
Mrs. Chabon.
This is a great question, not one that I was anticipating, but I really like this one. I would say one of the things that stand out to me most from my K-12 years was in high school, and it was my guidance counselor. I grew up, one of my father passed away at a very young age, and my family struggled. And this woman was amazing. She said, and I'm so old, there was no internet or anything, but they had, you know, their internet searches of colleges and where, you know, you would look, and we put in all the criteria. And this woman worked with me tirelessly, and she helped me with every facet of going to school. And I ended up, the main reason I ended up where I was was because of her. So still to this day, she's incredibly, that memory is incredibly important to me and has helped me become who I am, and I think it's also helped me help others as much as I like to.
Mr. Lyman.
That is a great question. Thinking back to my K-12 years, that's, again, a long time ago. But, you know, I enjoyed my years in school. I was involved in a lot of different things. Most importantly, not just the education side, but it was relationships that I built through, you know, friends, teachers, things like that. I think that's what's very important in the education system, is giving kids that ability to do that and build relationships. I've been lucky that I've coached there for twenty-three years now after leaving, so it's kind of like I never left. I just gave up that position here in February, but I've been able to see kids grow through coaching and through other things. And that was part of my life experience that I wanted to give back to them. So hopefully, kind of utilize that experience to help here.
For our next question, we will have up to two minutes to answer. "Do you feel that there should be student input in the decision-making process, including student membership on the Board of Education? Please explain." We will begin with Mrs. Chabon.
I think that's a really, really good question. And I certainly think that students should have input. I mean, all the decisions made at this table are for them in the act, right? I mean, obviously, there's smaller decisions that wouldn't impact them directly, but I think that there should certainly be a student voice. And I don't think that that just helps from an input decision, but I think that that also helps, like, you know, from leadership capabilities for students. That's a, it's difficult these days for kids to talk to adults and have that confidence. So I think that anytime we can put kids in a situation where maybe they're a little uncomfortable, but at the end of the day, it's really going to help them, I think that's a fantastic idea.
Mr. Lyman.
Yes, I do think students should have a voice and an input in the decisions made about them and for them. How that is achieved, I'm not really sure, whether it be committees or direct contact with the board. That would be something that would have to be discussed. I would encourage students to put something together to present to the board or to the administration. And how to do that, as Miss Chabon said, taking on those leadership responsibilities and trying to have a voice within that. So I think that would be a good idea.
Mrs. Casmerak. I'm actually surprised they don't. You asked me about when I was in school, I was in the honor society, and we actually did have a voice to lead our school board. So I would certainly think that students should have, as has been stated, the system and how it's done, obviously, would have to be worked out. But I guess I always thought it was. It was many decades ago in my school district.
Our next question, "In your estimation, what is the biggest challenge that faces the Lancaster School District? And if elected, how do you plan to solve this challenge?" We will begin with Mr. Lyman.
Biggest challenge? That's a great question. I'm not sure of any specific challenges at this point, so I'm not aware. My goal is to get involved and listen and see where I can help. So I'm not aware of any specific challenges at this point.
Mrs. Casmerak.
I would say if I were to say a challenge, and I don't know if this is a challenge or not, but why I'm running is to be a new voice to the board. So if I were elected, obviously, I would feel that would handle that challenge. Otherwise, I look forward to the conversations at the table to find out the challenges that are in front of us.
Mrs. Chabon.
I said this before, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I don't know what I don't know. I think that, obviously, if, you know, there's running for a new voice, then there must certainly be challenges out there. I think that when you have opposing views on certain things, it's really important to get together in a room to discuss it. I think that if everybody thinks exactly the same way, nothing will ever change, for the better, for the worse. So I think that when you have opposing point of view... So I think that when you have opposing point of views, that's the only way that you're actually going to grow. I work in a very male-dominated field, and I think that I don't always have the same voice as everyone else. And I think that it's important to be able to have the conversation because that's the only way you're going to get anywhere.
Our next question, "What concrete steps or experiences will you bring to the Board of Education in order to better the communication between the school district and community?" We will begin with Mrs. Casper.
That is a very good question. I agree with Indita that there has to be conversation. And so I don't know the system all enough. There will be a learning curve, obviously, for all of us sitting here, whoever's elected, to see how that can happen, that there could be more conversation and communication. I do believe that's one of the frustrations in this district is that there is not enough conversation and there's not enough communication. So I look forward to that challenge. I'm a person that, I will say, I look at my greatest gift is that I can see the large picture, or what I say, the forest, but I also see the trees that fit within the forest. And so I love the challenge of systems. I love the challenge of what is best and how can we do this? If there's frustrated people out there, how do we handle that to alleviate the frustration?
Mrs. Chabon.
I feel that this may be a difficult question for myself to answer as a parent in the district. I mean, there, every, every school has ways to get in touch with the parents to keep them informed. And I probably would, like I mentioned before, being on the District PTO Council, I'm in a different school every single month. So I, I feel very well informed. But I would be interested to know the issues that others may have. Unfortunately, I probably am not the best person to discuss that only because I'm not certain of the, the issues that are out there.
Mr. Lyman.
Yeah, of course.
"What concrete steps or experience will you bring to the Board of Education in order to better the communication between the school district and the community?"
Yes.
I think I understood the question now, I'm sorry. You know, my career is built on, you know, meeting with clients. I'm a financial advisor. And most of my time when I meet people is spent listening, asking questions and listening. So I think in order to help solve problems and create solutions, we have to listen first so that we can put together a solution to be able to solve those problems or work towards a solution that compromise sometimes. So that's what I would do is take my experience and my career to listen and evaluate and then come up with a solution that hopefully would be good for everybody.
Our next question, "Do you support the push for students to actively take part in Advanced Placement AP classes at an earlier age? Please explain." First up, we have Mrs. Chabon.
I appreciate the fact that we have Advanced Placement. I don't think that any student should be pushed if they don't feel as though they are ready. You know, I think some students maybe could reach, but are, if they're never given the opportunity, then, then they will never get there. But I think it's a great idea to have it available if students choose to have it. I know, you know, my own daughter is taking part in AP classes and has been part of the accelerated program, and it's, it's worked for her. But I think every single child is different, and I wouldn't want to push it on anyone if they're not ready.
Mr. Lyman.
I mean, if students want to be able to take those classes earlier, I'm not opposed to that. If they're ready and they want to move forward, then they should be given that opportunity. Sometimes it's not, you know, depends on resources and other factors, but if they're ready to move forward, why not? And I think we are lucky to have AP classes here in our district. I was talking to a parent the other day, and they don't even offer them in that district. And it's not very far from there.
And Mrs. Casper.
Well, having a daughter who had been part of that a little bit, I obviously believe that they're wonderful opportunities. But the word that stands out in that question to me is push. If the children are being pushed into something or to make the schools look better, whatever it might be, I would say I wouldn't be 100% behind that. But I definitely think the opportunity to the younger children would be wonderful.
Thank you. Our final question for this evening, "Do you believe that the district should support field trips by paying for some of the expenses? Why or why not?" We will begin with Mr. Lyman.
I mean, I don't know how field trips are funded now, so I don't really know how to answer that question. You know, certainly, educational field trips are important for the students. And, you know, I don't, how they're funded. I'm not opposed to the funding done by the school district within budget constraints. That's, I'm totally fine with that.
Mrs. Casper.
Yeah, of course.
"Do you believe that the district should support field trips by paying for some of the expenses? Why or why not?"
I definitely do. I love field trips. I think my children and my grandchildren have grown so much through field trips. I could sit and tell you all the stories my grandchildren have been telling me on their field trips. But yeah, I, I see no problem with the school district paying for some of that, if not all of it. But again, it's a learning curve, not sat on this board yet. We'll see.
Mrs. Chabon.
So I will say, I don't know the specific guidelines from the state as far as field trips go. I do know that as an active PTO parent, that was probably one of our main budgets, especially, especially in the younger years. That's what we were always fundraising for. So I'm not exactly sure of the guidelines, whether or not that is something that the school district can or can't do. But I, I mean, like everyone else said, I think we all agree, field trips are wonderful and are important and necessary. But if allowable, yes.
Thank you to everyone who submitted questions to our candidates. At this time, we will begin to close our floor with each candidate having a one-minute closing statement. We will begin with Mrs. Chabon.
So I would like to thank everyone for coming here tonight. This is a great turnout. I didn't actually know what to expect. And I want to say thank you to the Student Union and everyone that has helped here. You guys are wonderful. So this, this was a really great experience. I think, I think I would be a great candidate. I hope that I have everyone's support. And I, I really just want to help make this the best district that it can possibly be.
Thank you, Mrs. Chabon. And next, we have Mr. Lyman.
I'll reiterate that, that thank you everyone for coming out. Thank you to the students as well. Excellent job tonight. Didn't make a sweat too bad. But, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that, and I would be honored to have you vote for me. I want to continue to make a deeper impact in our community as I've done for many, many years and continue the excellence of Lancaster. I do feel we are the best district in Western New York, and I'd like to keep it that way, and I want to be involved in keeping it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman. And finally, we have Mrs. Casper.
Well, certainly, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the board. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Dan, even though you haven't put that red flag up once. I just want to say thank you all that would come out and didn't hear us see who we are a little bit. I would love your vote. I believe in this school district. I've known it for two generations now, and I see the excellence in it. But I also see that with everything, there can be improvements. Obviously, I bring a conservative mind and a conservative faith and a conservative voice that I would love to see sit at this table. But I also believe that there are good people in all places. And we have great students. I know we all represent students. And here's yellow for me. And I will say thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. On behalf of the Lancaster High School Student Union, I would like to thank the candidates and the attendees for their interest in our schools and their future. Our hope is that this evening's forum was informative and helpful. Our, good luck to all the candidates, and please remember to vote on Tuesday, May 21st, right here at the Lancaster High School Java Gym from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. This concludes our program.